Welcome, everybody. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to its virtual city hall meeting. There are two public forums that aside for public comments. One at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. I may call upon you to speak. I request that you limit your comments in no more than three minutes and that you avoid repetition. Please note that Mayor leaves out of town and I'm available to attend the meeting, so I will be in his place. And I have somebody, could you please mute your phone or whatever your microphone is? We have a little bit of a...
You muted yourself.
Much better. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with Nevada open meeting law?
You unmuted yourself.
Yes, we are.
You muted yourself.
Great. And now we had the opportunity to have the invocation given by Councilman Black. And upon that will be the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Churchill. Please rise.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this beautiful day here in North Las Vegas. We're grateful for the many blessings and opportunities that we have, especially for the opportunity as a council to serve our community and to strive to improve the lives of those that live within our community and in our region. At this time, I pray for the schoolchildren in North Las Vegas and throughout our county as they prepare to embark upon this unique and unusual school year, that the technology will be present, that the commitment from families and teachers will be in place, and that the children will have a great zeal and desire for education in this unique times. I pray for continued watchfulness over our first responders, our law enforcement, our medical workers, as we still struggle as a community with the pandemic that we are facing. I pray that we may be guided with wisdom this evening. Please watch over our mayor while he is away, that he can return to our community safely. And I offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. Councilman Churchill?
Mayor Protem, thank you for the opportunity. We're all standing. I'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. That was very nicely done, and that was, as always, a very thoughtful and heartfelt invocation by Councilman Scott Black. Council item, now, there's a little bit of a mix-up here. It's a little bit my fault. I should have asked my colleagues for the council items. We'll just go down the line here to see if anybody has any impromptu announcements. I know I have a couple. Councilman Churchill, do you have any council items to announce?
Nothing today, Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Okay. How about Councilman Black?
Tomorrow, 10:30 a.m., we are having the ribbon cutting at the Harbor, North Las Vegas. It's an amazing program for juveniles and our young people in our community to help them to stay on the right course, and it's a diversion from the juvenile justice system. It's an awesome program, and I think it will serve our community well and the youth and families that need help in it.
Fantastic. Fantastic, yeah. I hope I can sneak away and get away there to be there myself. And let's see here, Councilman Gwynne Brown?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Friday from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Nevada Partners is hosting a high school back-to-school backpack drive through giveaway. It will be on the Nevada Partners campus, and it's from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it's geared toward high schoolers.
Fantastic. Fantastic. By the way, how does it feel to not be going back to school after a lengthy and distinguished career as an educator?
I'm toyed between my feelings because I do miss supervising awesome teachers, and I truly miss being with the kids. However, with us opening our Southern Nevada Urban Michael School Academy on Monday, seems like I'll be right back into the thick of things.
Fantastic. Well, again, you know, you're definitely an American original here, having gotten through three decades of teaching. For myself, I just, I have three announcements. The first one is I have a backpack and school supply event that I'm connected with here, empowerment through training education, and I get my office here sponsoring a backpack giveaway event. Yes, it's strange, we are giving away backpacks. It's going to be this August 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the address is 3407 Sim Center Drive. Your child must be present, and you have to have a mask to attend. But they'll be giving some out if you need. If you need more information, please don't hesitate to call 702-723-2955 to RCP. Also, I want to thank our government affairs director or manager, I'm not sure what his actual title is, he does that, Jared Luke, he's a great guy, and he put together a food and school supply donation event that the Salvation Army and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints are putting on this Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. right here at City Hall. So I thought that was fantastic. And then I have, and again, I'm so happy that we have so many people who want to come together. Like I said, I mean, that's the quality of the North Las Vegas community. We have one more youth backpack drive. Again, this will be August 22nd from 12:00 noon to 3:00 p.m. It's called Robert Stroud's Community Engagement Youth Backpack Drive, and it will be at Rose Garden, and that address is number 12 East Webb, right here again in downtown North Las Vegas. And if you have anything to give out, you can, they can all use thumb drives, pencils, paper, backpack, pack em later, headphones, you know, those are great. But there will be free backpacks, free food, music, drinks, and fun for the kids. And again, mandatory face covering, that's totally distinct, this thing will be observed. Thank you so very much. If there's anything else, we'll move on to our public forum. Moving on to the public forum, this is time that is set aside to comment on posted agenda items. The public forum excludes discussion of public hearing items, which will be heard later separately. So, if you want to speak on any items listed under the consent agenda, this is our appointment. Now's the time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers online or any written comments?
Yes, we have two callers. I'll bring the first caller in for pub, actually, one just dropped off. We'll bring the first caller in in just a second.
Yes, you do.
Hello, caller. State your name for the record and address.
Hello, Michael Argier.
You muted yourself.
Hello, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Michael Argier, 3930 Howard Hughes Parkway, Suite 30.
Hello, did we lose our caller?
Yes.
Press star six to unmute. You unmuted yourself.
Hello. Yeah, caller? Can you hear me?
Yes, I apologize, I was on mute. I'm actually just here to represent the applicant on item 21.
Okay, that's fine. Well, you can either wait, so item 21, or I guess, well, this is on public hearing. Normally, well, I guess since it's on the, on business, I guess we can go ahead and do that. Please go ahead and just state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay, Michael Argier, 3930 Howard Hughes Parkway, Suite 360, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm just here on behalf of the applicant on item 21. I have no comments unless anyone has questions on that item. I apologize for being out of order.
All right, fine. And you might want to stick around just in case, you know, someone would like to comment when it comes up during the rest of the agenda here. You might want to just stick around, at least listen in in case someone calls in and voices a concern. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Do we, did we have anybody else call in, or do we get our other caller back?
You muted yourself.
Mayor Protem, we have no one else on the line or no written comment. Thank you.
You unmuted yourself. You muted yourself.
We have no one else on the phone.
Okay, well, and if they call back, we do have a second public forum at the end, you know, so if they, they can always call at the end. All righty then, let's go ahead and move on to our agenda.
Item one, approved city council regular meeting agenda for August 19, 2020. Mayor Protem and council staff recommends to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you so very much. Can I please have a motion to approve this agenda?
Move for approval of the agenda from Councilman Black.
Thank you very much. Let's vote now, just say, I get your name and yes or no.
Gwynne Brown, yes.
Gwynne, yes. Councilman Black, yes. Okay, that's unanimous. Let's go on.
Mayor Protem and council, the consent agenda consists of items 2 through 17, and staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as published.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Gwynne Brown, move to approve consent.
Thank you very much. Let's take a vote. Gwynne, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Councilman Black, yes. Thank you very much. I believe that is also unanimous, so motion passes. Let's move on to public hearing.
Item number 18, ratify Teamster Union Local 14 Collective Bargaining Agreement for Non-Supervisors, Supervisors, and Administrators for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, do we have a presentation on this?
Yes, sir. There is just a brief presentation as required by the NRS. Just wanted to update council, I mean, obviously, going into these union negotiations because of the uncertainty with the financial impact from COVID, we had kind of a bit of a streamlined process. Just kind of an update, I've been asked in some briefings, some update on the financials of where we're at. The year-over-year on C-Tax for the last three months of data that we have, which is March, April, and May, was down 29.7%. And it's important to remember that C-Tax is the largest source of revenue for the general fund, and that this drop in revenue is going to have significant impact to citywide operations. Based on revised revenue projections from the Local Government Finance Working Group, we're currently estimating that our citywide revenue drop will be $77.4 million lower than the pre-COVID estimate through June 2022. You'll notice that this is improving a little bit. We're, I mean, it's still $77 million full, but it's better, it's getting a little bit better as we start to get the actual numbers coming in, but overall, the projections are not terribly off on the fact that this is a significant drop due to the pandemic, and that the C, these projections suggest that the citywide revenues will likely not return to pre-COVID levels until after 2022. I think we've all seen the paper, and we see what's going on as far as, we are already seeing conventions for 2021 being canceled and large events being canceled for 2021. So we're seeing that this is, as we were thinking, it's a little bit of a U as we come slowly out of the recession that we're currently in. In response to the ongoing crisis, city management has done several different things. We postponed or canceled numerous CIP projects, and we've instituted soft hiring freeze. The 2021 budget approved by council did not include any cost of living adjustments or base wage increases for the employee groups. That's really, right now, our primary concern is for the long-term viability of our tax base. There's still a lot of uncertainty out there. The region continues to be one of the hardest-hit areas in the country for unemployment. We're also seeing that it's probably going to be one of the slowest areas to come back. There's been some national media attention to the uniqueness of our economy and the challenge that that puts on us as we recover because we just don't have the first fight base that we really need. And for these reasons, we've worked really closely with our collective bargaining groups to close the revenue gap and to just, to remain flat and have some concessions that recognize the financial challenges that we're in. We see this as we've launched the CARES program throughout citywide. We've seen the real trauma that our community is facing right now. I've worked with all of you as we've tried to find better ways to address the upcoming crisis that we're going to have with evictions, both in the commercial and the residential side. So there's a real, real challenge out there, and one of the most difficult parts about this one is, is it was so fast, and we just don't have really good data points to help us project it as well as we'd like to, but so far, the projections have been pretty spot-on. As far as this CBA for the Teamsters Local 14 in front of you today, the current annual salary benefit for the Teamsters is approximately $54.8 million per year. These are, these are team members that are providing vital municipal services to our residents, essential services that they need. And there's currently 524 Teamster team members that are covered by this agreement, providing services to our community. This agreement is to hold all base wages flat consistent with the 2021 budget. The agreement allows for continuation of annual merit increases. The agreement also shows a reduction in the medical trust contribution from the city to the Teamsters Trust, which has an estimated savings to the city of $314,000 a year. The agreement allows for an increase in union leave hours, as you'll notice in there. There's also an increase in bilingual pay, which makes this agreement consistent with our other bargaining agreements across the city. And clearly, given the nature of our constituents, having that bilingual pay is a good policy. There's also an increase in life insurance, which collectively, all of those things are approximately $61,000. So in the net-net, this is a concession to Teamsters that is going to decrease the, decreases the amount that we, under the previous contract. So I want to, I want to thank the Teamsters management team for the work that they did as well as their board. You know, as you know, this was a long discussions that happened pre-pandemic and during the pandemic, and there was just a lot of complexity there. There was, and I want to thank these employees as well as their leadership for getting this done. I also want to thank our internal team, Claudia Guayo, Alfredo Molestio, Will Hardy, and the finance team for their tremendous efforts to get this done. This is, I think it's an 18-month process, so there's been a lot of conversations, a lot of meetings, and a lot of work that's gone into this agreement that preserves jobs, it preserves services that are being provided to our residents, and it recognizes the economic uncertainty out there as well as the economic reality that a lot of our residents are facing right now, is they're either without work or furloughed or unsure about their financial, their personal financial situation. So I just want to thank both teams for their work on this, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Let's see here, my colleague, do you have any questions or comments for the city manager?
Oh, yeah. If there are any, oh, I was just going to say, if there are any questions, then just to remind you that it is a public hearing, which I'm sure you know.
Yeah, yeah, most definitely. Well, I wanted to go ahead and, well, go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we can always have questions from the city council here a little later. Let's open up the public hearing and find out if there are any callers or written comments. And the city clerk, do we have anybody waiting to call in, or do we have any comments?
Mayor Protem, we have no callers and no written comment.
You muted yourself.
Okay, fantastic. I guess I will close the public hearing. Do we have any, any questions or comments from my colleagues before we go to vote?
Mayor Protem, Councilman Churchill, I just want to also echo what our city manager said. Thank him, thank our management team, and once again, thank our Teamsters Local 14 and, you know, their members. They've always in the past stood up and, you know, given back, and personally appreciate them doing that again for us and for our residents over here in the city. Thank you so much to all of you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gwynne Brown, did you have anything to add or any questions?
I would just prefer, with Councilman Churchill, you know, give a heartfelt thank you to our speed staff and to our Teamsters and their members.
Fantastic. Thank you, thank you so very much. Councilman Black?
Yes, sir, thank you. I just want to say, in the three-ish years that I've been on the council, I have had the privilege of meeting Teamster represented employees in all the different divisions and departments of the city. I'm incredibly impressed and thankful for the high caliber of employees that we have. I, just as early as this morning, saw some of our Teamsters out on a cleanup site, helping clean up the wash adjacent to a large homeless encampment. They do their job with professionalism, with amazing expertise, with the equipment that they were using today, and I just am thankful that we have the team that we have.
Thank you so very much. For myself, you know, I, I'm incredibly, I feel indebted, actually, to our negotiating team, and I feel indebted, of course, you know, to the negotiating team who is fighting for the rights of our Teamsters. Again, you know, to make it fair and, you know, we need more than just our police fire. It's these people who keep the lights on, you know, who repair the lights, who keep the streets clean, who handle people coming in to City Hall and approve licenses and everything else I can possibly think of. It's a total team effort. And, you know, I like to think that we have a measure of family, and I know that I'm extremely, I'm really grateful that, you know, for the long run here, it looks like we're not going to, because of the give and takes in the city and from Teamsters, it's not going to cost anybody their job, you know, even though so many of our, so many of the people. And I think officially, we're at about 28% unemployment rate in the state, but I swear here that in Las Vegas, they're higher. We must be at 30% or more. And when it comes to, and that translates directly into money that's available for salaries. But I think there's a song out there by The Rolling Stones, I think it goes something where, you know, you don't always get what you want. In this case, I think everybody got what they needed. And with that, I think I'll, we'll close the comments. Can I please get a motion to ratify the CBA, this collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters?
Mayor Protem, if my colleagues don't mind, I'll be happy to make the motion to approve item 18 to ratify the Teamsters Local 14 Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Gwynne, yes.
Gwynne Brown, yes.
And I believe since Mr. Churchill, since Councilman Churchill called for motion, I assume that there's a vote of yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. And again, thank you very much to our entire family here. Let's go ahead and, I guess we have, let's see here, what's next here on our, do we have a public hearing now?
Mayor Protem, item 19. If I may, I can read that in.
Please.
Item 19, approve AMP 05 2020 Wayfinding Policies for Applicants. City of North Las Vegas to Request an Amendment to the Comprehensive Master Plan Amending Guiding Principles 3 in an Integrated Multi-Modal Transportation System, 7 Community Services in Men's Season Environment, and 8, a Safe and Livable Community. And the proposed amendment is amending the comprehensive plan to encourage the use of wayfinding signage that was funded by the Southern Nevada Health District. And again, this is to encourage the walking and bicycling of citizens to the city parks, and it's amending the four principles within the current comprehensive plan that would encourage wayfinding signs and different uses of, uses of walking and bicycling, something other than automobiles. And part of this grant that we received from the Health District is also going to pay for 70 signs to be placed within the city, particularly in the 89030 zip code area that would provide routing to our various parks, and those signages hopefully would be completed and installed by the end of September. Sheriann Dotson was the project manager that worked on this, and she is available if there's any questions.
Oh, fantastic. And of course, that's our director, Mr. Martin Jordan. Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan. Let's wait to see if there's any callers. We'll open the public hearing and find out if there are any callers or any written comments from the...
You unmuted yourself.
Mayor Protem, there are no callers and no written comment on this item.
You muted yourself.
Okay, thank you so very much. With that, I will close the public hearing. Do my colleagues on the city council, do they have any, do they have any questions?
Councilman Gwynne, this is Councilman Black. May I make a statement regarding this?
Most certainly.
I just wanted to say, I'm the current, I'm the member of the Southern Nevada Health District Board of Health, appointed from North Las Vegas, and I'm the current board chair, and so I am absolutely thrilled at this collaboration with North Las Vegas and the Health District to, and if you talk to Sheriann, she makes it look easy, but there was a lot of work and back and forth to bring this to fruition with the Health District. The grant, the REACH grant, has some really specific parameters, and our team really, really collaborated with the Health District to make this a viable opportunity for North Las Vegas, particularly the 89030 zip code. I think this will bring tangible, real-time value to our community when these signs are deployed. It will encourage people to see the great places that we have within the city to see and to do so in a way by either walking or biking that will promote improved health for our community, which is really the point of this effort. And so I just wanted to thank Sheriann for the great work that she did. I saw a sneak peek of the signs, maybe she'll show you guys also, but they're really beautiful. The designs are very attractive and easy to see, and the concept is amazing. So thank you.
Hi, this is Sheriann Dotson. I just wanted to point out in the announcement, the item should be a PowerPoint, and within that does have pictures of the three types of signs that we will be installing. So just to let you know, they are in the attachments, and of course, if you have questions or have any other photos you'd like, I can send those to you via email.
Oh, wow. No, I really wish, you know, I had it open here in front of me. It would have been fantastic to have this, I think, in front of the city council for us to see and admire. But, Ms. City Clerk, are there, like, any attachments that people can download if they wish to look at this and see? Is there, like, a link for the, for the related PowerPoint?
You unmuted yourself.
The documents that Ms. Dotson was referring to are in fact posted on our online portal, so people can see those signs as well as the other information on this action item. so people can see those signs as well as the other information on this action item.
You muted yourself.
Well, I'm, well, most certainly, you know, uh, uh, avail myself of my time here. I wasn't aware of that, and tip on the, uh, yes, uh, please.
The council meeting.
Yes?
I think that was someone that didn't have their phone, and it sounded like Patrick.
Okay. Probably so. Okay, um, uh, and of course, you know, uh, Councilman Black is, is a noted, uh, very avid, uh, bicyclist and, uh, very accomplished in that, so I, I, I know for him, this is a big deal. Um, how about my other colleague?
I just have a question, Mayor Protem, or Mark, our city manager. On the backup document where it lists the seventy signs and locations, um, one is at Milestone Park, to the North Las Vegas Library. Is that going to remain, or am I looking at the wrong name?
Mayor Protem, uh, council member, um, right now, that, that one is gonna be put on hold, uh, until we know what's gonna go on with Milestone Park. Um, so we're not real sure exactly what we're gonna do with that particular signage at this time.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
I mean, Mr. Jordan, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman Churchill, do you have anything to add?
No, uh, I just appreciate all the hard work and kind of echo, uh, everything our, uh, colleague, uh, Councilman Black had said. So thank you very much, Mark, for all the work you do.
Real quick, when you guys do, um, do you have a chance to look at the PowerPoint, there is a location map that does show all of the signs, and it does color codes each type, the turn, the confirmation, and the decision sign. So that is also in the attachment, so you can actually see where within the eight-nine-zero-three-zero we will be placing these signs. I just wanted to point that out.
Great, uh, 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 thank you very much, uh, Ms. Sherian. And most definitely, you know, uh, I, I, I sense the most of the eight-nine-oh-three-oh, um, down here in, in, uh, in, uh, the more mature part of Las Vegas, parks are basically at a premium, because of course, we have, uh, 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 the bad thing about living in a more mature part is, of course, we have older, uh, design standards for our community. So, uh, green spaces, uh, of, uh, uh, of course, are at a premium. So anything that we can do to rather enhance them, or get any more signage and, and more, uh, uh, people to direct them to use, it's golden. And, uh, if you go into any green space, any park, as soon as the sun starts going down, the people come out in droves. You know, they, I mean, our parks here in the downtown area are used. And anything that, 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 that we can, uh, do to promote them, uh, being used even more, uh, uh, getting people out and, uh, keep them healthy, um, that, that's a, a, a great thing. And just free to know, um, the city manager did announce that a couple of weeks ago, we have a, a fitness thing where we have our, our own version of the, of the Biggest Loser going on in here. And I didn't tell anybody, I am also, uh, working out now and, and trying to lose twenty pounds off my pounds, myself. So, but I, I'm not telling anybody, just want to get anyone to notice this. Well, thank you so very much. And, uh, I think with this, uh, if there's no more comments, let's go ahead and get a, a, a motion.
Mayor Protem Barone, I would like to make the motion, um, to adopt this item, or to accept this item and approve it. And, uh, if it's approved, when the signs are deployed in September and the weather's nice, I'm gonna invite all my council colleagues to come on a bike ride with me, and we're gonna follow the signs.
That's great. I'll follow you guys in my truck. Um, and, and with that, let's get a vote.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Barone, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Councilman Black, yes. Item passes. Thank you so very much. And...
Mayor Protem, council, item twenty, approve VACO four twenty-two, tropical allowance for applicant, AMH Development GC West LLC to vacate as you're averaging between Lawrence Street and Leslie Road. APN one-two-four-two-six-six-oh-five-oh-one-two.
Great.
You unmuted yourself.
Let's, uh, 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 open up, uh, to find out if there's any callers or written, any written comments on this, uh, on, on this item.
Mayor Protemper Barone, we have one caller. It could be the applicant, or it could be a public member. I do wanna note that you received, um, two public hea-, uh, a public hearing item in support of this item, and one, uh, public hearing notice in opposition of this item. So I'll bring the caller in.
Well, noted.
Hello, caller, state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name's Bob Gronauer, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive. I am here representing American Homes for Rent on this vacation, and we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. I think Mr. Jordan did a great job on the recommendations and staff reports, so I will leave it up to him if there's any other questions he can help me answer.
Thank you very much, uh, 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 Mr. Gronauer. It's good to hear from you, and I hope your family is doing well. Um, thank you very much.
So far, so good, I hope you're nice, too.
Uh, thank you so very much. Uh, council members, do you have any, uh, questions for the applicant? Okay, well, if there are no questions for the applicant, oh, uh, do I hear a question?
Uh, I don't have any questions, Councilman Churchill, Ward four. But, uh, if, uh, my colleagues don't have any questions either, uh, I'll be happy to go ahead and make a motion to approve item twenty.
So noted. And let's take a vote. Barone, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Councilman Black, yes.
Great. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, and have a good night. Take care.
Thank you so very much, and, uh, congratulations. All right, now let's move on to twenty-one.
Mayor Protem, council members, item twenty-one, approve ZN oh-seven twenty-two, and pass and adopt ordinance number thirty, thirty-one, and ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately twenty-three point four-one plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an RADC redevelopment area downtown Core Sub District to an M-one Business Park Industrial District. ZN oh-seven twenty-two, Project Foghorn, for property generally located at the northeast corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Owens Avenue, and providing for other matters, property related thereto.
Thank you so very much, uh, 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 Mr. Director. Um, let's go ahead and open, uh, a public hearing, and see if the city clerk has any callers or written comments on this.
Mayor Protemper Barone, we did have afforded to you one public hearing notice, um, in support of this item, and zero in opposition to this item. And we do have a caller, which I'll bring in, um, to the meeting right now.
Okay, fantastic.
Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Deacon Tom. Sorry, go ahead.
Did I hear Deacon Tom?
Yes, uh, Mayor Protem, this is Deacon Tom.
Oh, good, I, I, I hope you're doing well, and, and, uh, it's a hot, uh, 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 it's a hot day, and I, I just wanted, uh, to, uh, thank the organization, uh, for everything they do, and of, of course, to, uh, people for, uh, people for, uh, people protected in this very difficult time.
Thank you, sir.
Um, yes, um, go ahead, if, if you have a, a, a question or a comment on this.
Uh, thank him, and, uh, Mayor Protem. Uh, you recall that you and I met on this item, uh, uh, a few months ago. I, uh, attended the neighborhood meeting with, uh, uh, with Mr. Argier, and sent in our notice that we are generally supportive of the zone change. Uh, we had some general questions about traffic mitigation, pedestrian access, and typical general development guidelines as, uh, affected neighbor by the development. We have still not yet received any of the information, or had any of the questions answered, um, that we've asked. And so I, I called today to generally support the concept of development in our neighborhood, but I do think it's fair, uh, inequitable for, uh, the user, the applicant, to provide, uh, the associated neighborhood with some of the general answers to the questions that we've asked and have posted to the record.
Uh, no, I, I fully understand your, uh, your point of view and your concern. Um, uh, Mr. Director, is this something that, uh, that, 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 uh, maybe after the meeting, uh, perhaps you, you can talk to, uh, 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 to, uh, Deacon Tom, and, uh, put him in touch with the developer, and also, uh, with our team here at the city council, or, or at, at the, uh, at the, um, here, our, our, our team, that let them know about, uh, uh, let, uh, uh, let Deacon Tom know about his concerns, uh, re- regarding things that we already have in place, uh, you know, uh, to protect the public, and also, of course, to protect the plan.
Yes, Mayor Protem, certainly, we would be happy to talk to him. I might be able to answer a couple of his questions right now, though. Um, when we talked to the developer of this property, one of the biggest things we've asked them to do is since it's, uh, within our downtown redevelopment area, we've asked them to design their building, their site, to comply with our commercial design guidelines, which means it would, rather an industrial-looking building, it would be more of a commercial-looking building that would fit within the entryway of our city and be compatible with the downtown area. We've also talked to him about the landscaping that would go around the perimeter site. And then when it comes to the traffic within this area, there is, um, a residential neighborhood just to the east of this site, and there's a street there called Woodard Street. And we've talked to them that we do not want them to have any access to Woodard Street, because that could have an impact on that residential neighborhood. And so they've agreed to that, that there would not be any entry points or exit points on Woodard Street, and that they would focus on the traffic either to Tonopah, Owens, or Las Vegas Boulevard. As a matter of fact, uh, coming up on a planning commission meeting here in the near future, there are a couple existing driveway accesses on Woodard Street that they are, they've applied to already vacate, and so they will be removing that. But, um, anybody is certainly welcome, he's, uh, the deacon is welcome to call me. We can put him in touch with the right people to hopefully answer any other questions he may have.
Okay, fantastic. Um, uh, Deacon Tom, um, uh, does, does that, um, uh, what are your thoughts on that? Is, is that something that, uh, you can live with?
Yeah, Deacon Tom, for the record, uh, yeah, sure. Um, again, we asked those, uh, very basic development questions of, of Mr. Argier. Uh, at the time, he told us that he was under a non-compete, uh, confidentiality agreement, which, which, again, I understand that. We would certainly be willing to sign a non-compete if we, if we needed to. I think we have the same concerns, uh, Mayor Protem and city council, that, that you all do. Uh, you wanna ensure that the development's going to be conducive to the neighborhood, that it's put in safely for the pedestrian access, and that it has the appropriate traffic control and mitigation members to add value to the neighborhood. So, uh, I, I believe we're, uh, on the exact same page, uh, as the city of North Las Vegas would be, and just as the, as, as an affected neighbor that operates a large facility across the street, we just wanna ensure that we understand what the plan is and have reasonable, uh, uh, rights of, uh, of review of the information, and if that's best done with, with city staff or with the developer, um, I would just appreciate it be noted in the record that with respect, if this item is approved, that, uh, there is a commitment by the city and by the developer to share the appropriate level of information with, uh, with Catholic charities and with other neighbors.
Thank you so very much. Um, uh, that, that's, that's, that's great. I, I think I have your, uh, I, I think I have your, uh, your, your personal, um, cell phone, and if I don't, I think you have mine. So, uh, be sure to, to give me a, uh, you always give, give me a, a call or a text, and I'll, I'll make sure that, uh, that you have, uh, the, uh, the director's, uh, uh, contact information, so, uh, he, he can, uh, if we need a, a three-way meeting between the developer, city, and yourself, we, we can make that happen as well. Uh, thank you so very much.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you to the, to the city of North Las Vegas, city council, for allowing me to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Um, and with that, um, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, uh, my colleague, do you have, uh, any, uh, questions, uh, for, um, I, I guess, uh, the, uh, our, uh, I guess, uh, that, well, do we have any questions on, on this, uh, on the title?
No questions from Councilman Churchill, Mayor Protem.
Okay, for myself, um, this is, of, of course, right here in the, the very, uh, at the very, uh, edge here of Ward one, it's a very important, uh, uh, section. It's right, you know, it, it's the, it's on all of these boulevards, uh, right in the very entrance, you know, to our, 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 our little city. And for years, of course, you know, uh, we struggled with this, uh, with this area, um, because, you know, uh, with the, the area's still in transition, and we, and, uh, we've always had our eye out for, um, a project that would bring value. And, uh, from what I can tell, um, this, uh, this, this project that's coming in will br- will bring a major, uh, I mean, a measure of stability to this area, and will bring, uh, uh, of, of course, uh, increased security, as far, as, as far as we can tell. Increased security, the potential for jobs that are desperately needed, uh, especially right now. And these are jobs that are not related to the gaming industry. These, the, the, these are jobs that, that are, are definitely essential. And, um, they're very much needed, not just by, uh, 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 the whole immediate area, but I think for the whole region, possibly, you know, employment, uh, opportunities for my students who, uh, who graduate from Lando High School. And, um, gosh, uh, I, 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 again, I'm, I'm very hopeful that, uh, this project will, uh, deliver, and I'm, I'm pretty certain it will. Um, if there's, uh, if there's no comments from, uh, my colleague, uh, Councilman, uh, Black, or, uh, or from, uh, Councilman going Brown, uh, that would also be my, uh, my, uh, motion. But, uh, I don't know if there's any, uh, any, uh, comments by, uh, by panel of going Brown, or, uh, from, uh, Councilman Black.
No comments.
Not for me, either.
Fantastic. Well, I, I made the motion, let's take a vote. Barone, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Councilman Black, yes.
Fantastic. Uh, motion passes unanimously. And that's end, um, I guess, our, uh, our, our public hearing here. Oh, or, sorry, yeah, public hearing, but go ahead and move on to business. And, and by the way, again, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Director Jordan.
Item number twenty-two, pass and adopt resolution number two-six-five-three, establishing the city-state legislative platform for the twenty-twenty-one Nevada State Legislate- Legislature, amending the North Las Vegas City Charter for possible action. Um, we do not have a presentation on this item, council.
Okay. Uh, are there any, uh, are there any questions from, uh, my colleagues on the title?
Councilman Churchill, no.
If there are no questions, uh, I will call then for the motion to pass and adopt this resolution.
Going Brown, pass and adopt resolution two-six-five-three.
So moved? Let's, uh, go ahead and take a vote. Barone, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Councilman Black, yes.
And I think, uh, 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 Councilwoman going Brown also, uh, she also goes, yes. And in which case, this passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
I, I, I remember, item number twenty-three, pass and adopt resolution number two-six-five-four, establishing the city, city-state legislative platform for the twenty-twenty-one legislative session revising the change. The, the charge for violating Nevada revised statute four-eight-four-B dot six-five-seven, Nevada's D- for manslaughter statute, from a misdemeanor to a gross misdemeanor, for possible action. Mayor Protem, we do not have a, a presentation for this item.
Okay. Um, do we have any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Councilman Churchill, no.
Uh, for myself...
I would like to take the motion into, uh, adopt resolution twenty-five, twenty-six fifty-four, Councilman Black.
So noted. And, uh, just for the record, uh, I, I, again, uh, we've had a, a state of, um, very unfortunate, um, accidents, although overall, accidents are down for the valley. Uh, I'm a member of the RCP, for I guess the staff, they are down, fatal accidents are down for the valley, uh, pedestrian and, and so forth, but they're still, you know, one is one too many, and, uh, I'm, I'm, hopefully this will, uh, help address it. And with that, let's take a vote. Thank you very much. Barone, yes.
Councilman Black, yes. Councilman Black, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Let's move on to ordinances. Introduce only.
Item number twenty-four, introduce ordinance number three-zero-three-three, amend title ten, chapter sixty, section one, thirty of the municipal code authorizing the riding of bicycles upon the city sidewalks and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I do believe that's the only thing that we have for upcoming businesses here or upcoming ordinances. Let's move on to appointments.
Item number twenty-five, appointed by Mayor Lee, citizen member of the citizens advisory committee to fill an unexpected term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, citywide for possible action.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Mayor Lee has asked me to make the motion for him in his absence. And so with this, I move that Mr. James Corey be appointed to the CAC as Mayor Lee's appointment. Can we please have a vote? Verone, yes.
Councilman Black, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Let's go on to number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six, appointment by Councilman Black of the citizen member of the citizens advisory committee to fill an expired term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for possible action.
Thank you very much. Councilman Black, do you have someone?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I am really proud to present Mr. Milton Toguchi to the council for approval today. Mr. Toguchi has lived in North Las Vegas for many years. He lives in Ward Three in Eldorado. He is really eager to, I think he's semi-retired, so he has time to commit and is really eager to put his background in advocacy, in transportation, and in community service to youth in North Las Vegas and be part of the citizens advisory committee. So that would be my motion is to appoint Mr. Milton Toguchi.
That's a great pick. Let's have a vote. Verone, yes.
Councilman Black, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven, appointment of the citizen representative of our county community development advisory committee for a one-year term ending September fifth, twenty twenty-one, for possible action.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. I have a recommendation from Mayor Lee. And if you indulge closely, let's make the motion to appoint Mr. Jeff Alford to this committee. Let's have a vote. Verone, yes.
Councilman Black, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes. Fantastic. And, Ms. Alford, if you're listening out there, congratulations. You're one of our leading citizens, and it'd be an honor to have you on this committee. Thank you very much. Motion passed. City Manager, report.
Mayor Protem, council, I don't have anything to report. I just wanted to say, just very quickly, that everything is moving forward and is on schedule for opening up the Urban Micro Academy on Monday. There's been a tremendous amount of effort that's gone into this from Councilman Going Brown, Jared Luke, Director Palmer, and more, Patrick Walker. Just staff done a tremendous job in getting this together quickly for this much-needed service for our residents. I've listened to some of the residents, and they've expressed their thanks for this. And I just want to just thank the team for their amazing efforts on it. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. I, myself, I did, you know, I'm very, I kind of felt very blessed. And I count myself very fortunate to be part of an overall team that shows such resilience and such out-of-the-box thinking when it comes, you know, to difficult situations. And so most definitely, my thanks, of course, to my other colleagues here. Again, thirty-year-plus veteran, you know, of our school district. And everyone else is part of the team, you know, that made this happen. Any other comments or questions for the city manager? Okay. So let's go ahead and go on to the second and final public forum. Now's the time for the public to speak on issues and on the agenda. Counselor may hear the items but may not take any action upon any item raised during the public forum. Ms. City Clerk, do we have any callers or any written comments for this public forum?
Yes, we do have one caller. I'll bring the caller in.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you.
Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
This is Jeff Alford, three-eight-two-eight-two-second drive.
Ms. Alford, thank you very much for coming in. Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you. Appreciate that, and more than willing to serve my city and represent us on the county committee. It's very similar to what I do for the city on CAC, but this is on a grander scale with thirty people and every community and township in our county area, I believe, is represented. I'm interested to learn more about it, see what they do.
Fantastic. I couldn't think of a better advocate, you know, again, a retired educator himself from California. I stand in all of my education colleagues, and I couldn't think of a better person to advocate for us, you know, as a citizen.
Thank you. Okay, I'm calling you in for the public forum. I have a few comments. First, I wanted to compliment our city, our city manager, our staff, our councilmembers, and mayor for the way we're handling the distribution and the use of the CARES Act fund. I think we're getting a lot of positive publicity. We're doing the right thing and directing the gap to driving the money towards our residents and our struggling businesses. So it's a good day to see, and I compliment everybody for their work that the city is involved in. And the other comment I had was, now that we're not doing a video, we're just doing audio for listening to the meetings, I think we need to do a little bit of work on our website, on our main website, and also on the portal. Like today, I was trying to get in, trying to listen, and I kept waiting and waiting. And I really didn't find out that the meeting started till about four-twenty-eight when I heard, I kept going back to see the portal and our website to click on the meeting, and wasn't getting anywhere, there's no messages. So I think we need to do something, since we don't have a video, some message saying, you know, please stand by, the meeting will start soon. Something to indicate that it's going to happen if I just hang on. Because otherwise, you know, I gave up and I started seeing players, and it's been a flater, and I was really getting nowhere. So just to suggest these, so you don't lose people, you know, thinking there's no meeting going on. That's it. That's it.
Thank you so very much. And I do apologize. We had a few little technical difficulties there that finally we had a workaround. And that is, that's very, really noted there. And I'm sure the city manager will be working with the city clerk to head off any potential future spanks. I thank you again. And if there's no other comments or if there's another caller, I guess I will close this public forum. I thank everybody very much. And I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much. And I'm pounding my gavel now.
It's amazing.